Twenty-five City Council of Cresco, Iowa, meeting to order. Roll call.
Carmen.
President.
Busca?
Yes.
Basson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Tonight we'll act on the consent agenda, which consists of approval of the agenda, approval of the claims, approval of minutes from February 3rd, 2025, approval of Class B retail alcohol license to Dolgen Corp., LLC, DBA Dollar General, number 2400, approval of special Class B native wine license to Plant Peddler, Inc., DBA Plant Peddler, approval of application for tax abatement under the urban revitalization plan for Louis and Lisa Leonhard.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Busca?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Basson?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Staff reports. Public Works.
The water department's been working on changing out the water meters. Rita looked up before I went home today, and we've changed out about 235 of them so far, out of 1,900. So they're getting a good run on that. They won't be doing any this week because they're reading meters and don't want to mess that up. I think we had on Facebook the water temp reminder, keep an eye on your water temperature. Give us a call if you think you need to leave your water run. And I think we had quite a few call in today, so.
Yes, but they need to be checking their temperature.
Yep. Yep. You do have to check your temperature, too, before you can do that. So Saturday afternoon, we had a water main break on South Elm, down by Evans Park there. It's an old four-inch main. It's a little shallower there. It is covered with styrofoam, so it wasn't froze or anything. It's just, just an old, old water main that broke. So I think that's five for the year so far. We got notification late last week that we receive, will receive our tree grant money, the $3,000. So we'll have quite a few trees we can plant this spring. Street Department, Street Department's been working on trimming alleys and moving snow and so on like that. And then I think we've got yard waste on later on, so we'll talk about that then.
Thank you.
Yep.
Police.
Only thing I have to share is the K-9 vehicles back now. Just got a couple of adjustments to make on that, though, but that taken care of.
Perfect. Thanks, Tim. Administration?
I received an email from Cole Barrett of Opera Explorer Land. He is working with Brody for the hazard mitigation plan. So the next phase, they're going to want to have a meeting with each city in Howard County to discuss the plan, get their feedback, as well as discuss the process, progress of the mitigation actions listed in the previous plan. He said he can either come during the next council meeting and allow up to about 30 minutes for that, or he said he'd be willing to do it during a work session. Anybody have any thoughts? Thought if he came during a work session, it'd probably be about an hour.
Why isn't longer during the work session?
More time to discuss and pressure to move on, I think, it sounds like. He'll try to move quickly and.
We've had a couple of meetings on it so far, Amy and myself and the chief have been there, Rich, Neil Staplecamp. It's people from all over the county, the cities, fire departments and stuff like that. And we have to do it every five years, so that's just part of it. If we keep this, this up, then we get a chance to have federal money for disaster aids and stuff like that, so.
And it's actually lapsed.
I think a little bit, yep.
Two years?
Yep.
I was thinking probably work session would probably be a little easier. So if everybody's okay with that, I'll just send out a doodle tomorrow and we'll set up the time.
Okay. Sure.
And that's actually all I got.
All right. Thanks, Nikki. Committee updates.
Well, mine was at the fitness center meeting. They, their membership's up to 8:47. They're doing the locker rooms right now. They run into issues where the tile is two to three layers thick. Apparently, when they laid tile before, they just laid it on top. So you're clipping all that, so there's running into issues with that. Basically, two, Brandon said they're talking about a pub crawl on St. Patrick's Day for March 15th. And then with chamber meeting, there's a family fun night in May, which probably you're going to talk about anyway. And then basically, that's about all I got.
Any others? If not, we'll move on to comments from the audience. The section's reserved for anything that's not on the agenda that anyone would like to discuss. If there are not any, then we'll move on to new business. Item number one, Cresco Theater Commission to provide Scene Shop fundraising update.
Hello. Do I have to have it on?
Okay.
Okay. Currently, we have a raffle fundraiser. I don't know if you've seen any signs. It's a popcorn machine and accessories, and that'll go on through April 14. The tickets are available here, in the chamber, and at the theater. And there's been a lot of sharing social media to get that out and about. We have the Lorenz Singers coming, March 23rd, for fundraising, for fundraising. Proceeds will be split between both groups, between us and the Scene Shop, or between them and the Scene Shop, sorry. We have a fundraising event on March 29th, and all of the proceeds for that are going to the Scene Shop fund. And we also, the commission and the CCT members are working on donations from businesses, groups, and individuals. And we've had meetings set up and still have meetings coming up for that. More grants and donation requests have been submitted. I think almost on a daily basis, we get something from Wendy stating that more and more people have been donating to this particular situation. And we have more fundraising events coming up throughout the year. I realize that you want dates. Unfortunately, for something like all the things that we're doing, I can't give you an exact date on some of them. I know that this summer, we're doing our musical. And the proceeds, Dave and I have talked about, like, some of that's going to go back to this, and then the rest will go into the CCT fund, if that's what they choose. Otherwise, maybe all that, that's still kind of in the works. I know that there's people that have been talked to that have approached us about donating. We're just waiting to hear back what they're doing. So it's all in the works. And then, lastly, we are asking that we can table this decision until the next meeting on 3/2. Just because we do have a lot more.
We'll have to, I guess, we can talk about it with the council here. Does anybody have any feelings against that? I think it'd be a better opportunity for the commission and everyone to get together and come up with some firm dollar amounts, having a little bit more time, and then being able to firm up as far as where they lie on things. They might even be able to, I don't know if you can give dates at that time. I know.
Yeah, well, yeah.
But it'll give us a better footprint if we were able to table it until the second, as far as any motion that we do, or any resolution, or award of contract, or anything like that.
How long are the bids good for?
Thirty days from the date that we open bids, so 30 days from last Tuesday. So I don't have exactly.
That'd be the 11th. So that takes us out to the 11th of.
So it's beyond the next meeting?
Yeah.
A more solid number of where we're standing with donations, because this pretty healthy
So I did update all the pledges that we've received so far. We have 6,000 that's still outstanding, so they've done multiple-year donations. But otherwise, everything else is accounted for that we've received.
And that's figured into this?
The 6,000 is not off of that, but everything else is totaled in there.
So at this point, there's no reason to not table it till the next meeting. We can get more information. We can hear the rest of this, and we can make the decision the next time. Yeah. So I move we table it. I mean, we want to hear everything here, but I move we table the decision till the next meeting. I second it.
Roll call.
Basson?
Yes.
Carmen?
That's all right with you, Wendy?
Yeah, we had a meeting on last Monday, and then we have another meeting next Monday.
Okay, so yes.
Greener?
Yeah.
Busca?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
For, for that meeting, I mean, you talked about some events, but I can't imagine, maybe I'm not imagining well, that any of them, other than the donations and the grant apps, would bring in more than $2,000 apiece. Do you have?
That, the one on the 29th is a big one. That's something that's like $50 a ticket, and I can, I foresee that bringing in more money than that. Plus, we're bringing in people who have a lot to do with the theater or want to donate to things. So I feel like that's an opportunity for them to give more money to that. I realize that falls under donations. But like, our musicals make more than $2,000. So, I mean, so.
Can you tell us what this fundraising event is on the 29th?
Yes. We are doing a supper and a, bringing people back from past shows to talk and to perform a song or two, or do a scene from that play. So it's kind of like, when we do this supper, we're also going to do maybe, if anybody wants to take a tour of the place, and we'll obviously give them a little workup of what we're doing. And so, yeah.
That sounds great. Is there anything else?
Not for me. I just have a few questions.
Okay. Thanks, Kelly. And thanks, Ann, for coming in. Item number two, Brian Stark from Martin Gardner Architecture to update on the Scene Shop project.
As you should have in your packet, we did receive six bids for the project. Dave's completed construction on Delhi, Iowa, is the apparent bidder. I've had subsequent conversations with him, as I do with every publicly bid project, make sure he's comfortable with his number. No unforeseen issues with his bid. He indicated that that's the number he is comfortable with. That's the number he's submitted. So he is ultimately waiting on council's decision on yea or nay on the project, so.
How many square foot is that?
I think the addition is roughly 2,900, and I'm going off the top of my head on that one.
So what would your square foot cost be on that 2,900?
Oh, you're making me do math quick.
Well, if it were, if it were 3,000 and be 200.
Yeah, a little over $200 a square foot on that.
I guess my question, what am I missing on a, a building that size that we're looking at $200 square foot cost?
Um, as I.
Are we building four sides or three sides?
We're building four sides.
Four sides.
Yeah. Yeah. So as I indicated at the council meeting last month, some of the things that, one of this project that are unique is the fire separation in between the two buildings is not an economical type of construction. It is a code mandated type of construction. Having that much of a masonry wall constructed in the building is something that, it does take some expense to do. We're adding a trade to the project by doing that. We're also adding two rather expensive fire doors, well, one really expensive fire door, fire door, and one not so expensive fire door.
Is it because of code?
Because of code, yes. So because of the occupancy type of the building, we are adding on to what's considered a non-conforming building. That building does not conform with any current building code, so we have to separate. And again, that's just the nature of working on historic buildings. The occupancy difference between the two buildings also dictates the separation. We essentially have what's considered a storage building, even though there's green rooms, bathrooms, et cetera, in that building. It's essentially considered by the code as storage building. That's the common occupancy classification. The remainder of the building is an assembly. The code says between an assembly and this type of occupancy, you need a two-hour separation in between. So that's what dictates that. We've taken, at the request of the theater group and those involved with the Opera House, we're, we're keeping in the tradition of all the insulation systems that were being done in the building, utilizing closed cell spray foam. They wanted a highly efficient building, so we're utilizing closed cell spray foam in the building. That is a little higher cost per square foot spray foam, but we get better performance out of it. And also due to the unique nature of this building being a single slope roof away from the building, because that's the only real way we could achieve what we needed to do with the addition, ventilation in those attic spaces are very difficult. With a single slope, you have to utilize leaves. In my experience, in my 26-plus years, I've never seen a system that I really like that I think performs as it should. So by applying spray foam to the underside of the deck, we do not have to do worry about attic insulation or attic ventilation, because the attic becomes part of the conditioned space. Beyond that, really, there, you know, the exterior stair to the roof for maintenance purposes, for HVAC and roof inspections, is an item that's, that's costly. I mean, it may be a $15,000 to $20,000 item in the project just for that roof access. That came at the request of all the contractors that have to climb the maze of ladder systems inside, and is more of a safety feature.
And that's the roof access to the.
Yeah, that we are moving, yeah, that we're moving to the exterior of the building, and that was more identified as a safety concern by the contractors that do perform workup on the roof. So that was added in with that. Maybe a little bit of an upgrade in standard siding, just because, again, it's a building that is kind of visible. We didn't want to put vertical barn steel on the building. We went with a little bit nicer horizontal siding. Those all have costs associated with them. So again, a lot of those things just add up. And ultimately, the cost of construction right now is, in the commercial side, is just expensive. HVAC equipment's more expensive. The energy code dictates LED lighting. All that stuff raises the cost in a project like this, so.
You had seemed a little high after, when we had this last meeting, in your expectations, and, and I didn't see where any of that labor was going to be donated back into the cause. You had mentioned that possibly?
I have no idea with the bidding.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, I have no idea with the bidding. That information hasn't been shared to me. There might be subcontractors that may step forward and say that they have donated labor and stuff to the project. But going back to this time a year ago, we were predicting that the project was going to be 650 to 670. We obviously, through the whole process, talked with local contractors. Local contractors gave their opinions based off of their early concept plans. That's where the number of 550,000 came up to, five to 550,000. But again, like I stated last month, ultimately, it's, we're at the whim of what the bidding climate is on the day that we open bids. And as you can see, the contractors can't even agree what the price is. We went from 614,000 to 806,000. So again, we always see a fairly wide spread. That 614, that low 600 number was something I had kind of prefaced at the, at the last meeting, that we could see numbers that could be upwards of $600,000 for this project, depending on, again, what the climate of bidding currently is.
Where's that Dave's construction from?
Delhi, Iowa. So Dave has been a general contractor for decades. I've worked with Dave as long as I've done this job. He's a very qualified contractor. He likes these projects that are a little atypical, that have some weird connections renovation-type things. So, yeah, he's, and he utilizes Rick Roman here, who is a local resident, as his job site foreman for all his projects, has been for years. So I know Rick very well. I know Dave very well. They're very good contractors. Beyond that, subcontractor-wise, I have no idea who they're utilizing. I haven't asked. They're not obligated to tell me, at this point, who the mechanical, plumbing, electrical, concrete contractors are.
So in effect, what you're doing is building a four-sided building and setting it against the back of the.
Correct. Yeah. Yep, exactly. And the tie-ins, and we're already doing some improvements to that existing link. That link does need help. When the building next to it was raised, Wendy and the group organized to get some Band-Aid patchwork done to the building to make it weather-tight. That's essentially what was done. Through the investigation with that demolition, we're having to make some structural improvements to walls in the building, because they are not structurally great, the two-by-framing and stuff in there. So there's a lot of improvements that went into that. We're also replacing the roofing and the finishes on that link, too, so that'll tie it together with the addition, so it'll look uniform.
Anything else for Brian? Thank you for your time. So we'll move down to.
I think you still have to do the public hearing.
Oh. So we'll open up the public hearing for any comments in regards to the matter of adoption of plan specifications, form of contract, estimate of costs for the Cresco Theater and Opera House Scene Shop.
And there were no written objections.
If there are none, we'll close the hearing. And then we'll move on, because I don't have to get a motion for that.
We already tabled.
Yep. So we'll, so from here, we'll move on to item number seven, Discussing Request and Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation to Vacate Undeveloped Portion of F Street?
We have to make a decision on that tonight.
On F Street?
On F Street. I've been in touch with one of the landowners down there, and I think it probably need to have a little more discussion on entries and stuff. That's their, obviously nothing's going to get done or going to get built in this temperature, so I wouldn't think that. I guess if we're going to vacate these streets, I just want to go into this 100% and know exactly where we stand on stuff.
Yeah. Is it something that you need to get more information on as far as?
Yeah. I talked with Dave a little bit about it, and we put an eye on it here last week, and just deserves a little more looking into.
Okay.
So that's, yeah, F Street.
So are we going for a motion to table this until the next meeting, or?
I'd like to see that table till at least the second meeting, because one of the landowners was going to be out of town this weekend, probably would have been at this meeting, so.
Oh, okay.
But. Table to a future meeting or? Yeah. I'm not saying we're banning the project, but, I mean, we're going to give up this, this street, and involves city properties and trees and.
So do you also want to wait on setting the public hearing then as well?
I believe so.
I mean, you could set that for the next meeting.
I think we could do the next meeting. The public meeting.
Well, no, because I have to send it to the paper. So, I mean, I can.
So we need a motion to that effect?
We can discuss it at the next meeting. Hopefully, we'll have more information. And then at that meeting, we could set the public hearing for a future meeting?
Okay.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Something.
I, I don't object, but I'm curious what information you're looking for.
We got the trees on, belong to the city of Cresco.
Yeah, I did have a question about why we should cut the trees down.
Well, I'd need further discussion, so.
But what else?
That's a big part of it right there. They don't want to cut down? Some they do, some they don't. If, I mean, it all makes it, which way are we going to go with this, you know? So.
But what?
It's not a hurry.
Yeah, I mean, as I say, I don't object to tabling it, but if we're looking for more information, I'm just curious what information.
We want to know more about these trees before I'm going to pass a vote on anything. So.
But what are we looking for about the trees?
Hard to tell which ones are healthy right now.
Oh, okay.
And which ones aren't.
That's a big part of it, is the pictures that we looked at from a couple of years ago showed that the trees were green, but some yellowing start to form. And I'd like to know, what are they? I mean, they're obviously not, well, some of them are dying all over the ash. Ashes and stuff.
Yeah. I don't, you know, I don't know that, I guess. I don't, we'd have to go look at them. And so, yeah, because they had some concern with some of the trees there. And I mean, that's up to you as a council to determine what to do with them, so.
And my question would be, other than ash, which we should have cut down, why is it our responsibility to cut down any of the trees? So, okay, I mean, yeah, as I say, I haven't got no objection. I think what you have a motion in a second, so.
So roll call.
Carmen?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Basson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
All right. Moving forward, item nine, Discuss Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation to Amend a Portion of the City of Cresco Origins, Chapter 165.24, Section 1, pertaining to zoning regulations for M1 Light Industrial District.
So you saw the notes from the public hearing there. Any questions on any of that? I'm going to get to the right spot here.
So I agree that that particular two lines is hard to interpret, but, so my reading is if we remove those two lines, they now have fewer options as to what they can do in this, in this M1 zone. Is that correct?
So I don't know if that's necessarily accurate, I guess. The code itself, I found in our old books in the, in the safe, I believe this code is the exact same as it was in 1969.
It's probably the exact same as the state.
And who knows how much older than that? So some of the stuff doesn't necessarily pertain to today. I talked with John Anderson about this a couple of times. I talked with Jason Passmore. They both agree it can be read multiple ways, and maybe just be just as easy to remove it. If you're concerned about the number of gallons, or want more gallons, or whatever, you can, you can change that, too, I guess, you know, and leave it in there. Make it 100, or make it 250,000 gallons, for instance. It's, or, like I said, with talking with John, he said maybe just remove it then.
Well, okay, it says principal permitted uses.
Yep.
A is any, anything permitted in a C district. B is industrial manufacturing centers such as the following. And then we list flammable liquids not to exceed 25,000 gallons. So if we take it out, it is no longer a permitted usage, is my read. Is that, is that what we're intending to? I mean, I'm confused about what we're.
I mean, John Anderson, when we talked about it, I guess he didn't read it that way.
You're reading it that it's, it's not appropriate.
Yeah, I'm reading it as now it is appropriate, and when we take it out.
Over 25,000.
Correct. Anything over 25,000 gallons would not be appropriate. And if we take it out, I read it as not being listed as appropriate at all. And I don't think that's where we're trying to get to.
True.
What wants this, Dave?
What's that?
What wants this changed?
So if, for instance, there were to be a convenience store there. Yep. And so if we read this now, and Jason and I read it, and John Anderson, too, the last statement, not to exceed 25,000 gallons and located less than 200, 200 feet from any R district. So where, where it's at now is.
Across the street from in our district.
No, it's up, it's up the ways. It's not, it's, it's over 200 feet.
Okay.
If there were a convenience store to go there, there's another one just down the street in the same district.
Well, the cat out of bag is on that one. I didn't mention it, but I can now. At the CDC meeting, they mentioned that City Hall has plans for this convenience store.
Oh.
So, I mean, do we have plans?
I've seen plans, yes. But, I mean, there's no building permit. There's, Spanky still owns the property.
So, I mean, you've seen plans. Have you seen plans? So then they're saying City Hall has plans, and who, who in City Hall is like?
I would, I would, I've seen them, yeah. Yep. 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 And, yeah, so that's, that's kind of what's, what's part of this, yes.
So it's, it's them, okay.
Yeah.
The gist of this whole thing is just to raise the gallons from 25 to 100?
That's one option, or, or take it out. And like I said, John Anderson is the city attorney de coras, so he's, he's well aware of everything that needs to happen.
And he's fine with the verdict going either way?
Yeah. Yeah.
So you've seen plans, but we're not in possession of any plans?
I don't.
Say drawings or what somebody's.
If I have one, I may, I'll have to look. If it was an email or what, I'm trying to think now, but yeah.
What kind of gallon amount would a convenience store want to have?
I think they said if, if everything fell into place, 100 or less.
Or like 9.
Hundred thousand or less.
At least for 10,000 to 15,000 gallon tanks, right, wouldn't they? Diesel.
Yeah, I don't know how.
High octane, ethanol.
And is there a new mandate with, in Iowa with E15?
Could be. I don't think it's there yet. Oh, maybe it is. I can't remember.
Because I know the convenience store in Ridgeway got a grant for something for more tanks, but.
Yeah.
So why wouldn't we just up the gallons?
That's, and that's, that's certainly up, so the Planning and Zoning makes recommendations, and the council does what they feel appropriate. Yeah. So either or.
I think we should just increase the gallons.
Yeah, that.
Yep. And that's certainly an option.
Is the, is the.
I can remove anything that's there. Who wants for a reason?
To be honest with you, this, probably the whole C1, C2, M1 code, we should, we should probably sit down and rewrite it completely, because it's old. It doesn't reference convenience stores anywhere. There's a lot of things today that it doesn't reference.
We have that come by the next meeting, Dave?
What's that? Yeah. And I mean, where Quickstar is now, I think, is C1.
How many gallons do they have?
I don't know.
So we could go to all the work to change all this stuff, and then get some actual plans and find out we got to change it again.
I don't think so. No, I don't think so. I know talking with Jason and John both, you know, you could, we could leave it in there. It's just, it's just reads a couple different ways, you know?
Why not just leave it, change the gallons?
And that's fine, yeah. That's an option. Maybe 125,000 then.
Wouldn't leave it at 100?
Yeah. I'd go maybe to 125. Like I said, there's some new, if that new, and I read very little about it, E15, that I just mentioned, if that's a new mandate where they would need, need more than something because of that.
I would just put a 1 in front of it.
Yeah. That might be best.
Does that take a motion, or?
You want to change it to 125 and leave the rest?
Leave the rest.
In there?
So has the fire chief seen this? He's okay with it if we?
I guess. I guess, not sure if we've talked about it, yeah.
I can't believe what we're doing will be any different than any other town...
Right.
Across the...
Right.
The state that has these.
Yeah.
Certainly is a lot of fuel, money, but it is underground, so it's not, leaks are more of an issue than anything else.
Yeah.
Now, I think they got all the systems to detect leaks and stuff.
They were.
Got to remember. What was there before?
Stand.
Body shop and everything?
Yeah, there was a fuel station right across the street from it, you know, before.
I, I'm not adverse at all, but I certainly would want Neil to, I mean, he's the guy who's going to have to fight the fires.
Okay, so 125?
I would say yes.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. But I want to, I want to make one caveat on that, is we second it, but if we have information that comes back to us, can this be rescinded and re-boarded on?
Yeah, so the next on the agenda is to set a public hearing for this, and then we'll do the first reading of it. So you'll have, it'll be on at least the next two agendas.
Maybe there's a possibility we could have a better feel for what they're actually thinking about gallons by then too, and...
And get Neil's statement.
And if it comes down to the 125 isn't enough, at the next meeting, I could put a 2-whatever, or shouldn't you guys could reevaluate it?
I think that'd be more than enough, but I think there's something to be said for that, for holding off a little while, so we don't end up going through it twice. It's not like we're going to chase them away by not doing this, either.
Right, they already have the property.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's pretty clear to them that we'll cooperate with them.
Yep.
Most businesses, we're going to cooperate with.
So I've got a motion, and I've got a second. Roll call?
Greener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Item number 12. Motion to Grant a Winter Adjustment for a Credit on Water and Sewer Bills for Customers Running Water to Prevent Service Lines from Freezing.
And that would be for this current billing cycle, which goes from, I believe it was January 20th to February 29th.
How will we do that?
Second.
Roll call?
McConnell?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Greener?
Yep.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Greener?
Yep.
Buska?
Yes.
Carson?
Yeah.
Carson?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Greener?
Yep.
Buska?
Yes.
Carson?
Yeah.
Carson?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Greener?
Yep.
Buska?
Yes.
Carson?
Yeah.
Carson?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Greener?
Yep.
Buska?
Yes.
Carson?
Yeah.
Carson?
Yes.
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 Item number 12. Motion to Grant a Winter Adjustment for a Credit on Water and Sewer Bills for Customers Running Water to Prevent Service Lines from Freezing.
And that would be for this current billing cycle, which goes from, I believe it was January 20th to February 29th.
How will we do that?
Second.
Roll call?
McConnell?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Greener?
Yep.
Buska?
Yes.
Carson?
Yeah.
Carson?
Yes.
Greener?
Yep.
Buska?
They have to call you first, right?
Correct.
Okay, yes.
And then we'll discuss it probably at one of the next meetings to see if we want to continue it.
Item number 13. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Sign a Traffic Control Device Application with the Iowa Department of Transportation.
And we've got locations figured out. These are the signs we talked about with the state. Tim's good with everything, so.
And what was the warranty on that? I see the, one, a two-year warranty.
He said, the signs they have now, they've had a little bit, so, but he said at least a two-year warranty, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Are you guys okay with one being outside of City Hall and fun?
That's... And in the future, we can do what we want with these, or what?
Yeah, he said once, I mean, once we sign it, they put them up, they're ours, so.
I'll second that. Good with it?
Roll call?
Greener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carson?
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 Yes.
Carson?